There's two chairs in the front if anyone else wants to sit down. And three maybe.
The front.
Just like church.
Like church, nobody wants to sit in front of me.
Okay, and we're gonna begin in just a second, but if anyone would like to make a public comment, I'm going to ask that you sign up on the sheet. So if anyone wants to do that and hasn't before the meeting is called to order. Okay. Okay, it's 5:00 PM. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. I'm doing a roll call. Please note that all directors are present. Erin, would you be open to reading the mission and value statement to get us started?
Absolutely. At Decor Community School District, we embrace student learning and well-being as our fundamental purpose. We will, in partnership with our students, families, and community, make the world a better place. The mission of the Decor Community School District is learning, thriving, creating our legacy. The vision of the Decor Community School District is, Decor Community School District will be a collaborative, innovative, learning-centered organization empowering students to embrace their personal strengths and create their future.
Okay, and we have one item of new business. This is the second reading of Code 503.08, Discipline of Students Who Make Threats of Violence or Causes Incidents of Violence. So this is the second reading.
This is the second reading of the state-required policy as such, as recommended from ISAB. We didn't modify it. We just took what ISAB recommended because it's mandatory policy for all school districts to have an Iowa.
Well, given that it's a mandatory policy which we have no discretion in, I move that we adopt the policy that the state dictates.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
I would make a proposed amendment that we move item aye to the beginning of new business, given that there's more people than we have standing room for. Make things easier so people don't have to stand for a couple of hours.
That's a good call. Okay. So I have a motion and I'll wait. Ask for a second.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries. Next is the approval of the consent items, and we have, you know, sometimes we approve these all in one motion, but tonight we need to abstain from number 32 and number 124, and those are payments for Ron Badness and Aaron Zander as reimbursements. So I'll accept the motion to approve all consent items minus those two, and then we can vote on those separately.
We're to approve everything except the number 32 and number 124.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And next I'll take a motion to approve items number 32 and 124.
I'll make a motion to approve item 32 and 124 on the bills.
Not second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Okay.
Yeah.
And abstaining. Okay. Okay, next we're gonna have open forum and communication from the public. I'm first gonna read a statement about this part of the meeting. Is the goal of the district to provide a guaranteed and viable curriculum for every student in the Decor Community School District. The open forum is set aside for the board to hear comments from the public. Comments are not limited to items or topics on the agenda, but are limited to matters within the board's authority and are not to extend for more than three minutes in length. As per Iowa code, the board cannot discuss matters not posted on the agenda. Also, please remember comments are being made in a public forum. Any comments that are considered to be inflammatory may be subject to legal action. So I'll call in the order that people signed up. We are gonna limit this to 30 total minutes, which we will be close with the amount of people that signed up. I'm going to time you, so three minutes per person. If someone speaks before you and you're later in the list, but they said everything that you were gonna say, take that into consideration to give time for other ideas in the room. And I'm gonna keep track of time using my phone. So I will give you like a finger or a thumbs up when there's 15 seconds left, just to give you a gentle reminder, and then my phone will ding when the three minutes is up, and then you'll have to stop. Okay? Okay, so first we have Madison Henry.
Hello, I'm Madison Henry. I attended Northwind from pre-K to eighth grade, finished in 2015. I'm a Maple Canton graduate. I graduated in 2019. I'm a recent graduate of Luther College entering the nursing profession. Many things went into my decision to attend Maple Canton instead of Decorah, including, but not limited to, smaller class sizes, athletic opportunities that began for me in third grade, family that graduated from Mabel, and current family that were going to Mabel, and an inclusive community. I felt welcome to MC well before the decision arose to decide whether Maple Canton or Decorah would be my better option. I also had the opportunity to attend and participate in track as a seventh grader with Decorah, and that only validated my decision to attend Maple Canton. While at Maple Canton, I was a four-sport varsity athlete. I started multiple years in each sport. I was an active participant in choir, band, and receiving superior ratings in competitions as individuals in any groups. I was in National Honor Society, Student Council, FFA, holding historian and vice president titles, and while all while gaining my certification as a nursing assistant and working alongside that. With that, I was awarded as a senior the AAA Award, honoring excellence and leadership in participation in arts, athletics, and academics. All of that I can attribute to not only my personal work and determination, but the family and support of every single Maple Canton student and faculty member. Denying the parental and student choice to choose where they send their child to build their community and receive an education has been and will continue to be an unnecessary stress on this particularly small population. Forcing a child to be in an unfamiliar, uncomfortable, and for many unwelcoming environment puts them in a stressful situation. Learning and an overall well-being is hindered when your body is in a stress response. This is not what is best for the student, parents, or their families. Not only would you be putting these students in this situation, you would be taking them away from their supportive, inclusive community that Maple Canton has provided thus far. Establishing relationships and a sense of community is an integral part of child development that is a standard established by Public Health Nursing. If you had the count of the revenue of 27 students, that there is a larger part to play with the financials of the district or the cultural construct of the Decorah community, as numerous schools along the same border have allowed the very same thing. Financial implications stand to be higher for Maple Canton than they do for Decorah in regards to numbers. As 27 students is higher than the average class size of Maple Canton, and that cannot be the same as Decorah. In the end, this decision should not be forced. I believe that students have a better chance of success in a community where they feel valued and accepted. Going forward, I'd like to talk to the recommendations for students and family to currently attend Maple Canton while living in the Decorah district and continue to do so on graduation.
Okay. Next, Steve Chambliss. Stephen Chambliss.
Thank you. I first want to thank Carol and Erin for your willingness to serve our community as board members and to thank all of the rest of you for your many years of service. Tonight, I am coming to encourage you to consider a process whereby, with your skills and talents, you can move to Core Community Schools from being an excellent district to being an outstanding one. I would encourage you to develop in the next six months a just-as-district strategic, long-term, and structural improvement plan to guarantee that we move from being an excellent district to an outstanding one. I would encourage you in that strategic plan, which would guide our district from two to five years to include student achievement goals, improvement of instructional programming practices, a review of district and school culture to guarantee that it is positive and supportive to all persons, to pursue broad professional board development, and to expand in many ways, community involvement, your community involvement as board members with our entire community. With outstanding student achievement, it has been, I believe, some time before our community has been fully aware of the achievement of our students at all levels, including K-12. We also need information about those students who are now receiving instruction through an IEP and how they are performing, as well as our English and language learners. It is not enough to accept the level that they are at, but there should be annual goals for the improvement of each grade level. While we know that our high school receives constant recognition, we also need to know what the achievement levels are of the entire student body as we move forward. Looking at instructional practices and programs once those instructional needs have been identified will be very critical. We know through brain research that the most rapid growth occurs between birth and the conclusion of primary grade. Therefore, looking at our primary program, we must guarantee, for example, that it is appropriate. Decorah has a legacy of guaranteeing appropriate class five in kindergarten, first, and second, and those have usually ranged from 17 or 18 in kindergarten to 20 or 22 in the other grades. That was true when I arrived, and I soon learned that that was a community expectation. That's one example of the area of student achievement and instructional practices that you could review. The other three areas need extensive involvement as well.
Okay, that's three minutes. Thank you. Next is Kale. Paul of Stroud.
Hi, I'm Kyle Holder. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Maple Canton Student Enrollment Agreement. I'm a sophomore and I currently attend Maple Canton High School. I live at 3543248th Avenue, Decorah, Iowa. Due to the location that I live, Mabel is a lot closer than Decorah for us as well as other students that live in Iowa that go to Mabel. It may only be about five miles more to Decorah than Mabel, but it would add an extra eight minutes per day, which figures 24 hours per year of me driving to school and back home. And this is only considering one trip to and from school a day. This is the equivalent of you losing three unpaid vacations or prepaid vacation days from your job. This is wasted time driving and wasted gas. Also, it would cost me and my family more than $2,000 extra dollars per year of driving to school and sporting events if I went to Decorah, according to the IRS deduction. This is factoring in all the trips I would take to school a day, all the sports games, and all the other extracurriculars that I'm involved in. I play football, basketball, baseball, and I'm involved in trap shooting, so I have a pretty tight schedule all year round. I run a livestock business. I'm raising cattle, and I raise real crops in my on my own rented land north of Maple Canton, north of Canton and Maple Canton's position, which is even further from Decorah. My schedule is already tightened up going to Mabel. It would be an even bigger convenience for me to go to Decorah. Also, in exchange for the use of my family's farm equipment for my own farming operation, I spend time helping out with their crops and field work. Most of the land is closer to Mabel than it is to Decorah. Therefore, I can go right from school or practice to go and help. On my participation in multiple sports, I need that extra time to prepare myself for the future and build a strong financial base myself. Time is valuable to me, and it probably is to you too. I hope that when you make your decision, you focus more on the consideration of our futures and their time and not on financial gain or the NRC. Thank you.
Melanie Tease.
My name is Melanie Tease. I am an Iowa graduate of Maple Canton and a former member of this Decorah school board. When my small, three-room schoolhouse in Hesper closed, the Decorah board gave my parents the option of several Minnesota schools. They chose Maple Canton because of the distance, like when the parents here. When I was a freshman in high school, we started to hear that the Decorah school board was looking at terminating the tuition agreement. My parents assured us that we would finish at Maple Canton and started looking at residency options and other options in Minnesota. They did not expect that an Iowa school would pay a Minnesota school in perpetuity. There was no agreement timeline in place when the offer was made to pay our Minnesota tuition. My parents were well aware that this offer could end at any time. Today's scenario is much different. The argument is to extend this ignore the terms of the agreement outlined in October of 2019. During that meeting, the board specifically discussed that by granting this five-year agreement, it would allow the current high school students to graduate from Maple Canton. Parents knew that if they chose to enroll their child in the Maple Canton, that agreement would end in five years. There are those now who are trying to reframe this agreement as somehow being open-ended or up for debate to extend it. This board has been clear and more than generous. The other arguments I keep hearing is, what about doing what's best for the students? Which students? All Decorah students or just the ones that want to go into this school of their choice? This board is tasked with ensuring that all of the core students receive the best education. When money leaves this district, it has a negative impact on all of the students. Last year, the Iowa legislature, in their infinite wisdom, chose to strip $106 million out of the public schools to give to private school vouchers. Districts cannot continue to offer the same quality education when their funds are constantly under attack. This board cannot do anything about the private voucher scam, but you can control the agreements like this one with Maple Canton. I also find it interesting that some are suggesting that if this agreement is not extended, it will be more difficult for the district to pass any kind of bond referendum to address our aging and crumbling elementary schools. That seems like a strange approach to demonstrate your support for education. That kind of retaliation does not serve our students, any of our students. You were clear about your intentions in 2019. I urge the board to allow the sharing agreement to end in 2024 as it was intended. Thank you for your time and your service.
Tessa. Wait.
It's Tessa.
Tessa.
Pretend I'm not there. It's her fault. If I may, can I hand you a document?
Yes. Thank you.
So, before I begin, my name's Tessa Lances. I'm actually a Decorah grad 2000. I have two kids that attend Maple Canton. We live in Salton, Hesper. Before I speak to this. Before I speak to this, one thing that Melanie had said, pointed out about the agreement being sunsetting and that it was something that we knew would end it, I would just want to remind that the contract actually states unless renewed on or before January fifteenth. And that's a contract that the Decorah Board, Legal Counsel is that one who actually presented and wrote that contract. So, there is a stipulation, there is a clause there that there is an opportunity for it to be extended. So I think that we have every right to come to the board and ask for that to be considered. So, it's been mentioned to us that people feel threatened or just not okay with sending money across state line for our kids to be educated. We too are Iowa taxpayers. It's our money that is following our kids across. But we thought it would be interesting to see. So we put out a survey. We simply asked people, are you a resident residing within Winnebago? Community school, Decorah Community School District. Three hundred and fifty-seven people that responded, eighty-nine percent were. And if you, you can't see all of them there, but the majority of the ones who were not are landowners. So people who don't necessarily live and reside, but who own land and are taxpayers within the community. The second question we asked was, are they in favor of renewing the agreement? Ninety-eight percent of the three hundred and fifty responses we received were in favor of renewing. And then the last question we did ask was, the likelihood of supporting a future referendum. And seventy-six percent say that if an agreement to compromise is not achieved with Mabel, that that will impact their decision. It's obviously not a hard yes or no, but it's something that they're going to take into consideration. A lot of us had strong ties to Northwind, and we recently have seen that, you know, go out in dump trucks, leaving a pretty sour taste in all of our mouths. Not to say that that's necessarily Decorah's fault, but obviously it was a building and a property you owned that was a viable option for you to use and remodel and decided to sell it for whatever reason. That was your prerogative to do so. But, again, something to consider when we are looking at where we want our tax dollars to go. Thank you.
John Wainness.
Well, John Wainness, that's my wife. We do have two kids, a sophomore and an eighth grader that go to Mabel Canton. I'm a former Northwind graduate of ninety-nine. We simply get to the nuts and bolts of it. We chose Mabel Canton because of several, two basic things. The school size and proximity to our home. It's that simple. Like, our home to Mabel Canton is five and a half miles. It's fourteen miles to here. It's that simple. I mean, it's, we can make almost three trips to Mabel to one trip to be part of. Anybody with kids knows you're gonna make more than one trip a day most days, most days of the week. But it's really a convenience thing. And as far as talking about the Northwind school, yes, that is hard to see. But you guys didn't want to use that for proximity reasons, correct? Okay, it's the same for us. It's just closer. We didn't want to send them, any kids out to Northwind because of the busing or whatever, but then we had the same issue going to school when we have a choice to go five miles versus fourteen. We're gonna choose five miles every time. We didn't want it to come to this. We wanted, we wanted just a common gentleman's agreement. We knew things that were set at the last meeting when this was put together. But those, those are words and the way it's worded in the, in the agreement, like Tessa said, does lead us to believe that it's open for discussion, which is why we're here. Like I said, we tried taking it easy away, but all we get is a no. And it's like we don't have our voices being heard. This isn't the only situation, as they've said, some others have said, where districts have a sharing agreement. I mean, we've got states all across America, there's bound to be schools right along the borders. I don't know why this has to be so different. Our own governor is in favor of school choice, and that's for private schools, but it, obviously, it's leading towards school choice. The money is for the student. It doesn't belong to the district. It belongs to educate that child. It should follow the child where it wants to go. Facts are that not every kid, not every family wants to go to school. Open enrollment is available for kids to go to Cresco, Wakan, et cetera. It's just the fact that this state line exists, that you can say no to it. I don't think that's right. Open enrollment kind of hurt Northwind over the years. And I guess you're kind of getting a touch of how that feels a little bit. We also ask that you would please stop using the word "cost" when describing this situation. It's not necessarily costing the district any money. It's just that it's pulling through your hands. Again, it's just twenty-seven kids. It's gonna taper down over time. We all know that. I thank you for your time. I ask you to consider the kids.
Olivia Underbacky. Isaac Underbacky.
And as a Mabel Canton student, I do not understand what the core school system means behind that. I want to meet Mabel students to, Mabel students to stay at Mabel, and I would like to know what those reasons are. And it's just for, and if it's just for the money, I do not want, the only reason I feel that is fair and doesn't give kids a fair opportunity to do their best. I hope you take into consideration the kids and do what's best for them and not just for the money.
Tyler Wentholm.
Hi, my name is Tyler Wentholm. I am a sophomore at Mabel Canton High School. I'm currently participating in softball volleyball, FFA, and student council. As a middle schooler at Northwind Shig School, I didn't have many options for sports. Thankfully though, Mabel provided for me and all of my other classmates a place to go play sports, have fun, and learn at a young age. The bonds I created with the people I played sports with became a huge part of my life, especially coming from a small school with little friend connections. After a Northwind shutdown, I had the choice to either go to Mabel Canton or Decorah Schools. I learned, I leaned towards Mabel more because of the opportunities I was given there. Although saying goodbye to my Decorah friends and not being able to go to school with my siblings was difficult, it was a very difficult part of my choice and still is. But I've gotten through it, and I've had so much fun at Mabel. Throughout the couple, throughout my couple of high school years, I've grown so much as an athlete, and the bonds I have with my friends have become extra special. I would hate for all this to be ripped away and have to start over. I would just like to finish off my high school years at Mabel without any roadblocks. One very special part about being a student at Mabel Canton is the way teachers view and treat us. My siblings go to Decorah, and they've said multiple times how they feel like they're numbers at the, at the school. And at Mabel, I feel so much more important to the teachers than just numbers. Each and every one of us are special with teaching staff. As I, all I really want to ask is that you all take into consideration the impact of superstition and decision will have on my Mustang family and I. The last five years at Mabel Canton have been a wonderful experience, and I would hate to have to move schools my junior year and have to restart and find a new path.
Kale Wainness.
Hi, my name is Kale Lances, and I'd like to start off by saying thank you to everyone who has supported us Northwind kids. Coming from the small school of Northwind and had been playing sports in Mabel before Northwind shut down, and making friends through, through playing these sports, Mabel is such an easier fit. Especially being the small school, it was nice that Mabel was not much of a jump, jump up from Northwind. It'd be much appreciated by me and my classmates if you renewed the agreement.
Gary Kumpel.
Hi, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm gonna pass this forward. Some of you are aware, this is, there is coffee for everybody who's already there. Everyone of you are aware that we had a meeting last week with a couple of board members and superintendent and a couple of board members from Mabel Canton, myself. And I stand by comment that was made by here, though, by me, that I said, I think this agreement will die of its own course. And I still believe that to be true. At the time, in the last five years, we've got approximately thirty students. The numbers that, that you see in front of you right now indicate that we have twenty-seven students in attendance. Seventeen of those are at the grade seven through twelve. Ten are at the elementary. That in and of itself gives me an indication that the numbers are dwindling or will continue to dwindle. It was asked at, asked, asked at that meeting last week, how many of those are new students? So I did a little research, and based on what I found with my, uh, office, we've had four new students in the last five years. The remainder are families that continue to go here that have students at the secondary building and six that are at the elementary. So I really do believe that the numbers are dwindling. And if we allow this to continue in some fashion, you will see that they indeed will continue to, um, dwindle. The other thing that I wanted to talk about briefly is finances, because that was very evident in our meeting last week that finances are a strong consideration, and I understand that, absolutely. But we have to see both sides. I think in the October board meeting, you stated that we lost two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars in state aid this year. Well, that's true if these twenty-seven students were here, but they weren't. And I have, um, strong indication from the families that I've met with, that many are in attendance here tonight, that they do not plan to come to Decorah next year. They will find some other way. The other legal way is educational guardianship, and many of them have indicated that they may intend to pursue that. So, you're not really losing the two hundred and twenty-nine thousand if the students are never here, okay? Keep in mind that you also have revenue, and you've gotten more revenue than you've had in expenditures during the last five years. So you've actually made some money with this agreement. Please consider that, and I would be open for any, uh, questions or consideration when you move it on to the agenda, the agenda I have.
Savannah.
My name is Savannah Phillips. I am also a Northwind kid. It's very hard to know that I may not be able to continue to go to Mabel because I have friends and family that attend Decorah School where they, they, they're simply feel, feel like they are viewed as numbers, and they have gone their superiors and have reported bullying, and nothing has been done, and they have simply been told to snuck it up. And I'm scared to attend a school that treats some of its students that way. At Mabel, I feel like a valued member of the community. And it would just be very hard for me to come to a school where I know I won't feel that way. Thank you.
Eddie, or, can you help me with your first name? Eddie, okay.
Hi, I'm, as a former student from the Decorah School District, there have been lots of things that come from Mabel. Like I have been hurt by teachers at the school. I have more opportunities, example, like here. People are overall much nicer. Back at Decorah, I was bullied for many things, like my body and even the way I talk and accentuate. I never, and I was never heard by anyone. There has been many times at Decorah where I reported bullying, but nothing was ever done about it. No matter what happens, if I am forced to go to Decorah, I will find a different way to get my education, whether it's a different school in Iowa, homeschool, or a different way to attend Mabel. Thank you.
So that completes our, um, list of of comments. Next, we'll move to a presentation by Justin Albers from Decorah Middle School.
Sure, and I will just go ahead and, and talk briefly, and I'll actually turn over to, to staff, it was the middle school. So, you know, so much talk about a guaranteed Bible curriculum, we've talked about it a few times tonight. Director Goodner, I kind of mentioned that right away, and, and, you know, obviously, the academic book, of course, is, is always there and providing rigor for students, but there's large chunks of the day where, you know, there's other opportunities. And so, um, for those familiar with the middle school schedule, seventh hour, uh, seems to be for our seventh and eighth graders, our music block, where students have the opportunity to take choir and, and band and orchestra, which are fantastic opportunities, but not all students choose participating. So that means they have a study hall during that time that they're not participating in. And while there's work to do, of course, there's also students who are doing the work done and need things to do. And so, on the last couple of years, Shannon Horton, our teacher librarian, five, five through twelve, and Amy Courtney, our, our teacher, five through eight, have created opportunities for students to explore, um, other opportunities and to have a screen for an opportunity and really kind of challenge themselves in other ways. And so, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Shannon and Amy to speak about what they do.
I'm not really sure where to stand. Is it okay? Which important, Mr. Albert said, I worked with grades five through twelve as a teacher librarian in both the middle school and the high school. During the seventh hour, I started this last year after reading a lot about the impacts of COVID-nineteen on our students. A couple of things really stood out to me, and one was the amount of screening time that they had and that impact on their mental health. And, and just that they needed more social opportunities to interact, and, and there are a lot of them in our district, but this was an opportunity for me to contribute. And so during seventh hour, I have a sign-up sheet for a study hall teachers to send down twenty-four students. It's divided in half. And so we have twelve students, the first half of the, the hour, and twelve students the second half. It's an opportunity for them to come down without their devices, and then they have opportunities to participate in a number of different ways. And you can see the pictures here. There's blocks, there's chess, which for some reason is, is experiencing this resurgence. I don't know if it's playing online or what it is, but it's awesome to see. They're, they're really into it. There's Legos. Blocks, there's a game called Taco Cat Go Cheese Pizza, there's, which I regret bringing in. But, it's, 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 they're all fun games that they play, and then, um, bracelet baking. And so there are opportunities for them to just engage with one another as, as a social during that hour.
Yeah, and I'm Amy Courtney at the middle school now, and it's just kind of always been my twelve years there, kind of this goal to see how to get students just more invested in their time and creating, right? And allowing for this platform for students to come in that isn't part of just like their graded work. It allows students to still kind of hear that message that everybody creates. It doesn't have to be a space just for certain students that have certain habits or certain abilities in the art room. So we have open studio time. I usually have a few different tasks that they can select from. And then I kind of just see what the students gravitate towards each week. And it also allows for an opportunity that never happens at our middle school, kind of the mixing of grades. So I'll have seventh and eighth graders that can spend time together, that obviously maybe has some common interests that just wouldn't happen in a regular art classroom or a majority of our other classrooms. So, some of them are using pottery wheel, some of them are doing designs for, um, different chairs. And then, um, it just also allows, we just started, um, going into a plastic art contest. So students that just don't have enough time in what our, um, school can give them for some of their various art projects, They can come in and they can kind of keep expanding on things that they're interested in and building that community. Thank you.
Any questions for those two?
Well, thank you for being open to new ideas to uh keep people uh in engaged during that time period.
Um, have you seen, I do have one question. Have you seen new. Relationships between peers forming that maybe wouldn't otherwise have started based on their classes and activities?
I especially love if I have a younger student who, because they can also come in during that time just to kind of keep working on whatever it is they're working on in class. And they will kind of see an older eighth grader doing something just for the sake of, I wanted to come in today and I wanted to do something for open studio. And it's almost like these like aha moments of, yeah, I I can just enjoy my time in my classes as well, right? And that just doesn't happen in your run of the mill classes.
Right. And and Shannon, with you being shared between the middle school and high school, this kind of models what's to come in the high school as well, right?
You're right. And and I feel like my role is unique in the school. Um, and I sort of see my role as being like a a business owner, right? Like I have to sell the space. I have to sell what we have to offer. I have to attract kids and teachers to it. In order to make it meaningful, in order to make it, you know, something that really matters. And so this is a part of it and it does mean I want to do at high school.
Well, thank thanks to you both for all the community that you build and foster in our public school system. It's valued. Any other questions or comments?
I think it's wonderful and I, the art studio, I don't remember that you've done, this is for sure you've been doing this.
Yep.
Yeah, I bet it's so popular. I know during when I did, I had a seventh grade, a seventh hour study hall and the kids, you know, they. Really loved going down to the library and now having this option too, I I think gives them, you know, just that one more opportunity to be creative and and to interact during the day.
Okay. Thank you. Um. Next on the agenda is new business. And the first item is review of the Mabel Canton Student Enrollment Agreement. Um. So as we start this conversation, I thought it might be helpful for us to um. This is the first time that we have discussed the agreement with our new board. With Carol and Aaron on the board. And I thought it would be helpful for everyone to kind of review. Take a walk down the road of how we came to where we are today. Um, I had a great conversation with Carol last week and Carol before being a teacher, well, she's freshly retired. But before teaching in the Decorah School District, in recent history, she was a teacher at Northland. So Carol, I'd like, can you talk to us a little bit about um your time at Northland and when. Um, sharing began and started happening with Decorah and Mabel Canton?
Sure, I'll be happy to do that. Um. Um, I, for those of you who don't know, I taught at Northland for sixteen years and then I taught at Decorah for nine years. And uh thoroughly enjoyed both um my time at Northland and my time in Decorah. And um to see it the many benefits that 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 you students talk about in a small school, I saw that when I taught at Northland as well. Um. Uh, unfortunately, the uh Northland had the uh problem as many small districts have had in the state of the declining enrollment. And um due to um especially as someone mentioned, the open enrollment law that happened in in Iowa. In uh nineteen eighty nine and um and then people having fewer um kids and their families. So in two thousand two, two thousand three, a whole grade sharing agreement was um was made between Northland. And Decorah, the whole grade shared their high school into Decorah. And they also made a twenty eight E interstate agreement with um Mabel Canton in Minnesota. And um from my understanding, these twenty eight E agreements typically are done between states when there is um to meet when. One district has some kind of deficit or there needs to be some kind of benefit that that one or both districts get from each other. And in this case, it seemed really appropriate to make that kind of interstate agreement um across state lines. Because um there was a whole grade sharing agreement where the whole high school would be um. Students could choose to either go to Mabel or to Decorah. So fast forward, um and I I think this was a benefit, this worked for Decorah too. And and from my perspective, as as a Northland teacher, um. Decorah was a very fair player in this negotiation process with the with the whole grade sharing. Um, I think there was a sliding scale of how much of the money was. Of the state money was brought down to Decorah, Northland was able to keep the one cent sales tax money and and some of the other. Um, money, I think it started out at eighty five percent of the money came from Northland here. So um Northland really benefited. We were able to start a one-on-one laptop program very early, about a decade before Decorah was. Um, uh and and do some improvements on the building at Northland. So fast forward to um continuing to uh decline in enrollment and um needing to. You know, the writing was on the wall that we're going to have to consolidate at some point. Um. Teachers, we knew we were going to make staffing cuts and so one or two teachers would um voluntarily. Took took jobs in other places and that's when I came to Decorah. And uh I came at the same time as Christy Nemrod, who was a well-loved teacher both at Northland and and Decorah. Um. And so in two thousand sixteen seventeen, um school year, the seventh and eighth grade. Um, that that group was whole grid shared um also to Decorah and to Northland. So these the the shared agreements were between Northland and Mabel. And um unlike some of the information I've seen in some in some news reports. It said this was a Decorah Mabel agreement for the last twenty years. It's not been. It's been. A, just to clarify, it's been a an agreement between Northland and Mabel Canton, twenty eighty agreement. Um. So um and and at that point, there there were active negotiation talks and and plans for when the two districts would become the consolidated. Northland Decorah District. And um which happened in uh two thousand nineteen. And that brings us to um the the what we're talking about today. That 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 twenty eighty agreement with Mabel then became part of the negotiations from my understanding. I wasn't on the board, of course, at that time. Um, so for from in my mind where I'm sitting now today, I think what that that. Kind of focusing on the intent of the twenty eighty agreement when it was made between Northland and and Mabel is important. And then focusing on what um the intent was when this board. Um, renewed that or made out actually a new agreement between Decorah, Northland merged. Board and Mabel. And so I guess my question, which I'm hoping that those of you who were around at the time and on the board can answer is. What was the intent of that agreement at the time? Was the intent to allow those students who had, were already going to Mabel under that seventh and eighth grade and high school whole grade share agreement to be able to finish? Um, or was it that um this is for proximity and convenience for these students to be able to, in the northern part of the county, go to. Mabel? And what whatever the intent was of the agreement, was that made um clear to the public? Um, in in whatever way it was it was communicated. So I mean, that that's a question that's important for me to have answered today as I look at this.
And Ron and Brian, you've been on the board um for the duration of the last five years agreement. Um, is there anything that you'd like to share about when, you know? Why that agreement was put in place and um communications that you had at that time? Anything that you want to share?
Yeah, go ahead. Um, yeah, it was certainly a situation very much like this where um at the time when the reorganization was being discussed. There were people who were saying, hey, our kids are already at Mabel Canton. They're in ninth grade or they're sophomores or juniors, whatever. Please don't make them leave the school that they were in. Um, it was certainly not anything that uh. Was uh something that was in Decorah's best interest. But uh at that time, the uh um consideration was given. That, okay, if we agree to this for five years, then anybody who was in seventh grade or later. Would be able to graduate within the duration of the agreement. And uh it was discussed as reflected in uh the board minutes from that time. That the intent was always for those who were already there to finish. And we made as clear as we possibly could, which is reflected in board minutes, that uh this was a five-year. Process only. And if people were beginning, younger kids. In the district that they needed to be aware that at the end of five years, the uh the the core, you know, paying the. Tuition was going to come to an end. Um, and here we are. Uh, I think at the time, we were hoping that people would listen to what was said and. Uh, understand the cliff that was five years out there. Um. But uh obviously not. Um, I think uh. It was uh made clear over the years whenever we had a open year, not an open enrollment, but that's the wrong term in the interstate context. Um, we had no discretion to deny someone wanting to take advantage of the interstate compact. Um, according to the Iowa Department of Education. So in that time period was, yep, if you applied, you got approval. Um, but we always tried to emphasize that, again, don't be surprised uh when this changes in five or four or three or two. Um. So it's an unfortunate situation, but um quite frankly, as you mentioned, it was. More or less uh a concession at that time um to uh. To answer concerns. Um, certainly, um, no one likes uh a student having to switch schools. Um, but unfortunately, at this point, um, we did everything we could to um make sure people weren't caught off guard.
Mm-hmm. Tim, you came, you were hired um in the midst of this last agreement. Can you tell us a little bit about communication that that you've had with with families that this? That is you using the current interstate agreement or communication that that you've had with Maple Canton staff?
Sure, uh I would just say being hired. Yes, in. Spring of twenty-two, uh the board kind of gives you, hey, these are the things, these are the things that you're going to have to tackle. And one of the things that was brought up was uh. The Maple Canton, I you know, I don't even know if we remembered exactly when it terminated, but that the Maple Canton agreement was going to end and and was going to sunset. So that was the fall of twenty-two where we just wanted to make sure that we notified everybody. So we did send a letter that just said, hey, the agreement ends in uh June of twenty twenty-four. As kind of a reminder, I I coming in, I wasn't aware, I had read all the board minutes at the time and. Of course, newspaper articles, I don't know what was communicated, but we wanted to make sure that we uh communicated that out.
Mm-hmm. And just this last week as um. As Mr. Kupal explained, Ron and I did, and Tim had a meeting with um. With three representatives from Maple Canton, including Superintendent Kupal and Crystal Atkins and Chris Miller, who are both um. Board members. And we talked about. A lot of, you know, we talked through, they told us feedback that they had been hearing from their um stakeholders and community. And talking about um, you know, what this would mean if it did not renew. And um talked a lot about, you know, things that were heard from our open comment tonight about students um. Wanting to stay where they were. We also heard about, um, you know, one of the questions that I asked was, have you been in contact with the families that? You know, are, you know, that make up this twenty seven students this year? And they said, yes, they had and had talked about if this, if this agreement was not renewed, what that would mean. And options that they would have and um. You know, steps that could be taken to attend, continue to attend Maple Canton. So it's our responsibility tonight to um discuss and where we're at today. Um, this is not a voting item. This is a discussion item. Um, but if action is not taken um to renew this agreement by January fifteenth, it will sunset. So we have discussion tonight and um. And see how we're all feeling on that issue.
I think the only thing I could add to what Ron said is is when we had that, when we had that discussion, we also talked to the state. Because again, we're, it was very important and we were looking out for the students that were in. In the the school at that time that they could graduate. And I know we reached out to the state of Iowa to ask them if we could limit that agreement to a certain classes, certain um maybe seventh grade through. Through twelfth grade and um that way that those kids could graduate, uh but then. Um, that wouldn't apply to younger students and the states said we couldn't do that. So the agreement had to um be all grades.
From my understanding from doing research, I've done, I'm, this has been weighing heavy on my uh on my brain the last week. And so I've been doing a lot of research and then I I, you know, I went under the twenty eighty agreements and I I read them. I actually even talked to an IASB attorney today who happened to call me about some other IASB stuff. And um and I asked her about it too and and she said these twenty eighty agreements are different. Than um school choice. That they have to be between um two separate districts or whatever entity they are. They can be five departments or whatever too, but um that they they aren't made for the for the purpose of school choice. And for um parents being able to choose a school across the school border for their their children to go to. Um, we do have that option with open enrollment within the state of Iowa for students to do that. But that's not what these agreements are. These these agreements are for some benefit. And oftentimes it is whole grade sharing or it might be that there's some other entity, some other business or big rec center or something that that districts are are sharing. Um, sometimes fire department share, do these twenty eighty agreements across state lines and that that's the purpose of it. So that and and that and the proximity. And convenience. Are not enough to warrant one of these agreements. If that were the case, then then why wouldn't every county in Iowa have one of these agreements with. The corresponding school district across the state lines in the six different states that Iowa borders? We can imagine the chaos that that would create. For, you know, state and local funds going back and forth and keeping track of these students. Um, I I'm concerned also about, you know, that setting that kind of precedent. Because if our intent was to allow these students to graduate, that's a different intent than. Um, these students, we're doing this for proximity because it's convenient for these for these students. Um, if we would make it another agreement with that being the reason, then it. I I don't see how it could ever end in the future because that would continue to always be the case. There would be students who would look closer to Mabel than there would be or Spring Grove or. Um. And so it's this agreement, it's either, I I I just don't really see even legally how we continue this agreement with with the reason being proximity.
Mm-hmm. Um. We've seen pretty sweeping legislation changes this year, especially the. The state of Iowa and and our neck of the woods being in a rural area. We've seen trends of declining enrollment for at least the last ten years. With, so this is kind of a. A super storm of swift change, including. A super storm of swift change, including legislative changes, declining enrollment. Reduced tax funding for public schools. Um being elected to the Decor Community School Board means that the people who elected us. We are in charge of financially managing the school district. And um at the October board meeting, which unfortunately was disrupted on Zoom, so the entire recording is not there. But one of the things that was shared um ahead of that meeting, Ron, you had asked um. Kathy Dietz and Parker, CFO of the school district, to pull the total amount that. That had been shared over the last five years, and that amount was was over a million dollars. Which by extending an agreement like the one that's currently in place. That means that we are deciding to continue to allow funding to go over state lines. Um at the time that this agreement was put in place, was another special storm. Um which was a school consolidation where Northwind was consolidated in. To Decor School, so it's now Decor Community Schools. And that was really emotional times, schools are emotional because it it has multi-generations of of family, friends, community. Um those transitions are not easy. I wonder by. If we would continue to extend the current agreement. When would there, when would there ever be the transition? Mr. Kupal gave us the the rundown with number of students in each grade, showing that there's seventeen students currently in middle school and high school. And ten students in elementary. I don't know that that that's enough for me to show that. That there would be, that a population of families and kids would ever go away from from any area.
One thing that I would note too was in public comments, a few people mentioning, oh, why do other school districts make this work and Decor doesn't want to? Quite frankly, this doesn't fit our scenario. Um I'm aware of two uh sharing arrangements for the West uh uh through. Uh other friends in education. And in each of those circumstances, there is essentially. An Iowa town here and a Minnesota town here, and they're twenty miles apart, but they reach two miles from the border. So they wound up with a great number of students who are closer to. You know, like they live in Minnesota, or they're closer to the Iowa town, or they live in Iowa, they're closer to Minnesota now. That's not the circumstance here, it is geographically impossible for anybody. Uh from the Maple Canton district to use this agreement to come here. Because the restriction is you must be closer to that attendance center, so. Unlike most districts where people are doing this, it's not a bilateral agreement. You know, it makes sense that people choose the school that's closer, um and then the people further west choose the other one, but. That's not what we have, and uh it's simply, yeah, under our circumstances, a one-way flow of money. You know, across the state line. And the other thing I wanted to say with response to, oh, we don't care about the kids. Um, yeah, we do. We've got a hundred and one thousand five hundred and twenty-two kids that we care about. And there's twenty-seven that want us to take the money from the one thousand five hundred and twenty-two. And send it out of state. And with our responsibility, especially in these times, to. Provide the best for the one thousand five hundred and twenty-two students. We can't justify sending a quarter of a million dollars every year somewhere else. That's a lot of teachers, that's a lot of fuel oil, that's a lot of buses, that's a lot of everything. And uh so, yeah, we are responsible for the Decor Community School District, all. One thousand five hundred and twenty-two, not just twenty-seven. So, yes, we care about the kids and.
But I just add on to that from the perspective of a teacher. Um I I am sorry for the the bad situations that I I've heard a couple of people. Um mentioned here today, and I I feel badly for you, for anyone who might have had a bad experience in any school. Um but um my experience working in Decor, when the merger happened. That Decor, I mean, our our teachers and our students here really did all that we could to make Northwind students feel very welcome. Um every teacher had a list of who all the this Northwind students were that that were coming here, that were merging into our classes. We all made an e- exceptional effort to um to help his kids find friends, to find the activities, to get involved. We've had numerous Northwood students who came from Northwind to the merge Decor Northwind District. Who are um are the homecoming courts, you know, kings and queens, who are very, very successful in sports and our high schools. And and our middle school and um I would say students have made an exceptional um uh. Uh uh six uh transition to being in Decor. So um and I can say that from firsthand experience, and I had to make the change too, from coming from a small district to a large district. And and um I mean, there were a lot of things that were different for me and and I had to make some adjustments and and and. And my teaching and and just everything, but um but I made it and um. And I'm really glad I did, I think that um that that. The students that I see have have really benefited from having more opportunities, more options for friends. Um bigger pool of students to be friends with. They they've done, they they love it in Decor, that's what I see.
You know, it was five years ago, I've been in the school board for quite a while, and five years ago, we had this discussion, um it was emotional, you know, a lot of. Go ahead. Let let me try to make a question, then we'll see if if uh we're saying he wants to go with, you know, open discussion, but. Um but anyway, it it was really emotional and some of you folks that are here today, I think were here five years ago and and uh. And and had that conversation and it was one of the toughest things that I had ever done as far as a school board member at that time, is try to make that decision. And and I know when you made the decision, I said, well, let's be very crystal clear that. Everybody knows and we have in our midst that um that this, there's a pretty good chance that that um this is not gonna be renewed. Uh we didn't guarantee it would be, there's a pretty good chance it wouldn't be renewed. And that everybody understood and the ministry reflected that that we want these people to graduate. These students that are that are up there can can graduate and and spend their time with their peers and stuff. Um you know, we're five years later and and here we're going through it again, and it's extremely emotional and you. Students that talked today, um you know what, um. You really have this connection to to Maple Canton, it's a hundred percent, it's it's very obvious. Um there's not a person in this room that doesn't understand that that um uh that your kids are enjoying your time up in Maple Canton. And but as a school board member, you know, I look at this and I I can tell you this, I've been on board for sixteen years and and. This is probably weighed heavily more on me than anything else, and I'm trying to look at it from different directions. Um I see that I have sympathy for you folks. I also look and say, okay, why, why, why do people, you know, vote for me to be on on the school board? Uh one thing is to be fiscally responsible and do the right thing for the whole district, as Ron said, you know, we've, we have to look at the whole district. Um and do the best thing for the district. What this agreement does is that really, we're making an agreement that says that. Um we're making it really easy for people to leave our district. And not one person can come back into the district. So I try to put it in different ways and look at it and think, and go, okay. How, what's another way to look at this? And one way I looked at it is. If a district, if there's two districts in the state of Iowa and one district that said, I want to enter agreement with the neighboring district. And the agreement would say, um. We want you to sign a contract that your students can come into our school district. And we'd get the money for that, but our students can't come into your district. Would anybody sign that agreement? I don't think anybody in Iowa would sign that agreement. The district is that would be losing the students, and that's kind of what's happening here, um and it's because of the state allows it. Um but there's no, there's nothing that can do to be, to really benefit us. And as a school board member, you know, look at this million dollars that goes out over the last year. You know, what do we do? So do I, as a school board member, do what I'm elected to do? To do the best thing to the core school, the school district? And you know, I I think I know what that answer is, but then there's emotions, obviously, this is, geez, you know, um. Your emotions say, yeah, renew the darn thing, and um so it's it's really tough. I mean, it's absolutely as tough as you can possibly, you know, be presented with and um. So I got it, I'm so. Uh the good thing is, and I'm not saying this is, this is. Good for every family, because some of you folks might have two or three kids in 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 going to Maple Canton. But the good thing is, and the only thing that makes me feel not good about it, but feel different about it. Is the fact that you kids can still go to Maple Canton. You know, and there's gonna be some, if we decide not to renew this. You kids can still go to Maple Canton, but obviously, there's gonna be some type of tuition, um because Maple Canton can't just give you education for nothing. You know, what if they need to do something, so. That doesn't make me feel great, but it makes me understand that. There are ways that you can still continue your education and the parents can. Say, okay, kindergarten, first grader, fifth grader, we still gonna have you go to Maple Canton. And even though you, my cost is X number of dollars throughout your, you know, the time before you graduate. That might not be um. It it might not feel good, and it might not be good for the financial family, but it's a way to make it happen. So, you know, so there's, there's not a, there's not a wonderful situation here and uh. Uh and it's it's tough. If if we look at it from what we're, what we're voted on to do, I think, you know, the answer would be to. Uh to not renew the agreement, um but it's, it's not an easy one.
I have seen a few hands in the air, and I just want to remind everyone that. That this is a board discussion, so this is not a workshop, back and forth conversation with the public. Um if the board has specific questions, um. You know, they could seek that answer in the audience, but this is not gonna be a back and forth conversation.
As for uh board policies.
Correct.
Yeah, I would echo what Brian said. I don't want anybody to have to leave Maple Canton that wants to stay there. I just feel an obligation to not be paying the freight.
I totally agree, I mean, obviously, the students who spoke today are, you know, very committed to Maple Canton, and they're having a really good experience. I mean, I feel terrible about about this agreement and, you know, it was. I I look at it and I thought, well, maybe we could do do a one-year agreement, but that would really only allow three students to graduate. It would not affect. Very many students. For, you know, finishing their years at Maple Canton.
Yeah, I always, I also thought about it, you know, I thought, gosh, maybe we just do a three-year agreement and extend it for three years and and um. Uh it's kicking the hand down the road, it's 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 not really gonna, it's not probably good for. You, it's not good for us, you know, it 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 uh. You know, we'd be, we'd be back in here and we'd be. You s- your students would be in here and you guys would be in here and you should be in here. Um but it's, I don't think it's, um I don't think it's. It's a great way to move forward.
This was the highlight issue when I began running for the board and I. I, of course, am thinking of this as a parent of a five-year-old and a three-year-old. And I'm thinking about this as coming onto the board and I'm motivated, incentivized. Building an elementary school for Decor. It's the top button issue for me, my student taught in that building, I've been there. But the number one thing that you've brought up when I was running was this agreement, um. Talking about when it started, what was going on and what the timeline was when it was coming to pass again. I listened to basically all the parties, I've listened to people that were on the board themselves. At the time the agreement was made, it allowed every student that was in seventh grade to graduate from Northwind by Maple Canton. So those students that were already opting out to go north instead of south to graduate. I feel that we've allowed that to happen. Um as hard as it might be for continued students to. End this. One directional relationship at the moment. To continue to give one year, three years, five years, puts us in the same position, one year, three year, five years. Indefinitely for now. It's not a positive for the students, I felt for Tyler, who cried before she talked. I know that feeling myself, and the way that public speaking can be challenging. The pride I have in a student today to be able to still do that. Um shows the support that she's received at Maple Canton, and I don't want to disrespect that, but I also have to feel. Pride in what we have here and our students in Decor and the responsibility to them. I don't believe that waiting longer to make this decision helps anyone in the room, whether it be the board members or the families themselves. I think that having clarity at this point in time gives everybody time. And the ability to make decisions, whether that be for our board or a parent, to make a decision on where their child goes to school. And I think that is the best. Thing we can offer as board members is clarity, time, and the ability to make those decisions.
Okay. Um. So tonight, you know, this is not a voting item. But by, um if there is no recommendation to. Take any action on this agreement, um. I have not heard any recommendations to renew this agreement or to amend this agreement. So I'm just saying that out loud right now to allow space and time in case anyone wants to make a motion. Um otherwise, we will move on to the next agenda item.
Yeah, I guess I would just conclude by saying, you know, lest anyone thinks that, well, there's. Two hundred and whatever people that voted ninety. Six ninety-eight percent, whatever, um. In this room, I have no question that is indeed true, but from the comments that I have received from the community at large. Not the case, um we're not swimming against the tide here, it's um. It's different in the the broader context. For better or for worse, I uh agree that this is, should not be renewed.
And I can't remember what twenty said, that that you checked with the state and the state does not allow for. Uh that to do a a a an agreement.
With grandfather folks in.
That we either grandfather folks in, or would be like, we could do it for, we could, it it could be for eleven students. So that those eleven students could graduate from high.
That's what we were told five years ago.
Actually, pleased to call and haven't gotten back, yeah, gotten back confirmed or died, just. House phase, I guess, we'll get back, we'll get back to that.
That five years ago, that was crystal clear, because we wanted that, we would like to have to have that happen, so.
That those students would have been able to be.
Yeah, we guess we can't pick out grades and have agreement with a certain amount of grades and not the whole.
Or or go further and pick out families.
Oh, correct, yeah, yeah, correct.
Like if we wanted to say, like, absolutely, these twenty-seven kids, we can't do that.
Was it all or nothing?
Um, and I just wanna say how much I appreciate, um, so many coming tonight and making public comments and having the courage to speak publicly and trust us with your story and share your emotion. There's nothing more important than that and, um, we're tasked with making a responsible decision and not emotionally reacting. And, um, this is something that we've all put a lot of time and effort into thoughtfully talking, talking through and thinking through from both sides. And that doesn't make it any easier. Okay, we're gonna move to the next agenda item of reviewing the potential elementary facility. And we have Nick joining us tonight. Thanks for making the trick, the trip, Nick from Cedar Falls. And Nick is with Emergent Engineering.
Yes, thank you.
I see you can have mine after the meeting, okay, or right now?
Cindy, can I ask one question?
I'm sorry, we're, we're, um, you may not ask a question right now. We're gonna carry on through the meeting and I'm, I'm just gonna say that all of our email addresses are, um, on our website and we can be contacted in that way, but we, we can't have a, a back and forth with the public right now. Okay, Nick, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
All right. Well, thank you. Good to see you guys. Um, it was kind of, uh, coached to make this very concise and brief. So this is, uh, a little timeline that I put together, um, for Tim. And, uh, wanted to kind of talk a little bit about the process. Um, some of you, maybe you were not part of the interview process where you saw all of our slides or the presentation that, that probably is out there, if you're really interested, you want to see it, but, and I certainly can present that at another time, which goes a little bit more into detail in the process of the, in its entirety. Uh, but this is a project timeline of the process that we would work with the district on up to the bond issue. And then the last page, uh, puts down there kind of the overall schedule of accomplishing the project once it would, i- ideally, hopefully, pass, uh, in November. Uh, so, well, as you're looking at the schedule, the black, uh, e- essentially, there's kind of uh, three groups or, or three different ways that we, um, access stakeholders. The first would be the administration group. This administration group has met a couple of times already. Um, the, the first thing that we kind of talked about is went over the previous work that, that, uh, I have been involved in, uh, with the district for, uh, quite a long time. And so that was a fun experience, kind of shared some of the three Ds and some of the ideas that we had at the time. Uh, but we were under a different kind of set of circumstances and rules at that time. Uh, it's been several years since that. Uh, there was discussion about how much land we would get, where the line would be drawn. Uh, so s- some of those things still apply as far as the design still applies. Uh, but some of the things, uh, now that we've changed the rules are a little different. Uh, so now that the district has purchased the land, uh, we would continue to work with this administration staff and kind of start over with the programming um, and the designing work. Uh, the, the main things that we have focused on, uh, with, with the group has been site layout, traffic, um, and then kind of some goal setting. Uh, what are the things that we want to make sure that we get right as we do this project? And then talking a little bit about twenty-first century education space, uh, what kind of programming is gonna be in there? And specifically, one of the original questions was, would this building have third grade in it or would it not have third grade in it? Um, which, that kind of goes back to some of the work that had been done previously. So at this point, um, planning for a pre-K K one-two building, uh, as far as the discussion with the administration team. The second group then, that we would like to, um, get stakeholder involvement and would be a facility committee. Uh, in the past, there has been a group and perhaps the group is still involved. What, what was the group that we would meet with?
Probably the shareholders.
The shareholders, correct. Um, and so when we did the high school, uh, and some of the planning, the shareholders committee was kind of the group that was known as kind of the facility committee at that time. Uh, with other districts, we, we, um, put the administration or superintendent kind of in charge of creating a facility committee that is key members of the community, typically a broad spectrum from, um, farmers and rural to, um, retirement age, to, uh, families with students, some staff, most of the administration, and then a couple of board members, so that it's not considered a board meeting as we do this. And what we do through that process is, is similar to the administration, uh, group as far as we talk about how education is changing, how that affects your physical space, um. And then we process a lot of the gritty programming work that the administration does as far as processing different ideas and schemes and giving input from there, uh, where they are from as far as different factions of community or business owners or those different types of things on feedback on different schemes and designs and things that we come up with through the process. Um, the reason we have that facility committee is eventually we would like that facility committee to come and report to you as a board and suggest that this is the scheme that, and the solution that we would like you to move forward with, uh, for a bond issue. Uh, that, that process involves community members, key community members. And then ideally, um, those people become, uh, reporters, uh, people, trusted people in the community that, that, uh, other people from the community go to and ask about the process and they spread out information about, about the process to make sure that, um, you as a board and, and the district has really gone above and beyond accessing stakeholders and, and groups to be a part of the process. The other piece that's highlighted in here, then the third piece is, uh, public meetings. So, um, this goes through kind of a process of, you know, starting with the program, coming up with schematic designs, understanding, uh, traffic, what, what, what the district would like to accomplish with that. The facility committee kind of weeds through some different schematics and then we can have a public presentation where we present either where the design currently is at, what the, what the possible solution could be, or maybe there's a couple of different designs and then we can get feedback from that presentation on those different schematic designs, the pros and cons that they, they, um, see with those designs. And then typically at those mo- meetings, we use those as an avenue to talk about how financing works and how, uh, moving forward, how we would pass a bond issue, how that affects everyone's taxes. And then that becomes a communication process after that fact of, um, you know, this is how, this is what's being presented to the public. Um, here's some different schemes, here's approximately how much that's gonna cost and here's the bond issue that may be related to some type of financing for this project. Um, then, then we would take that feedback that we would get from that group, take it back to the administration group and to that facility committee group, work on that feedback, develop the design and eventually come to what I refer to in here as the hybrid scheme, which takes kind of the positive pieces from several different schematic designs and creates a design that ho- hopefully everybody can get behind that then we present as the final solution for moving forward with the bond issue.
Nick, you and I just talked a little bit about how, how does, how to get started with a, in a district and different districts approach things differently. And then I shared my, uh, example from Central City. It wasn't a bond issue, but it was borrowing against saving Pimple. We had about a three million dollar budget and it started out as, let's do something with the wrestling room and it evolved into, uh, transportation building, air circulation in the elementary and a new track and, uh, football complex. And I share that story because it was like, we used to call it the, the wrestling room project and then it was like, we're not doing anything with the wrestling room because we got in a room and we were coming up with ideas and it was like, well, we've got a solution in the wrestling room that we can do, but we have these other needs. Uh, so kind of like, we need to funnel our ideas down into ones. We're maybe at a different place here because we have a pretty distinct idea of what our biggest need is right now. And so how does that maybe look different on your end or, or, or how does that, how do you approach that?
Yeah. Uh, so a, a typical situation with the district would be, uh, a more typical situation would be, maybe the district is smaller, we would come in and do facility reviews of every building. Um, in those facility reviews, we identify all the different pieces that, you know, there's a replacement of mechanical system, there's not handicap accessibility. Uh, the, the traffic at this one side is not good. So we tend to identify all the needs that the district has throughout all different buildings and then help them to identify, you know, you have this much amount of financing, which is, in your case, you would say three million dollars. Here's are the top three projects you should do in the next two to three years. Um, and so that's how you would move forward. We've kind of done some of that process already. So when we had the, the, the shareholders meetings, we did facility reviews of West Side, the elementary and the high school at that time. And that group worked through and decided at that time, which would be kind of s- similar to this process, that they felt that the high school was the most important at that time. And so then we moved forward with the high school as a, as a solution. And, and since then have done other projects even to, to improve other district facilities. And I, even at that time, there was discussion on what was more important, the high school or John Klein. Um, and so now those other things have been taken care of. It's very simple to see that John Klein needs to be the, the solution moving forward. Um, and specifically the replacement of that. We've gone even through processes of identifying sites and those different types of things along those lines, so. So it's different than, um, a committee coming in and having to, you know, figure out what's the most important to the district. Uh, is it a track or is it a bus barn or is it a wrestling room? This, this is kind of a, it's very evident that John Klein is the thing that needs improvement. Um, the land's been purchased, um, let's move forward with some type of solution.
Nick, can you tell us about, so obviously, the existing board did a ton of work thinking about, like, looking at our whole community and considering like what infrastructure is needed for an elementary school and what location is best for that scenario. Um, so that the new land purchase is, is where, you know, nothing has changed in our community to open up new opportunities elsewhere. That is the spot where this project will be. Can you tell us about how are we, you know, we're taking, we're having efficiencies from old conversations, but can you tell us about the opportunities where the public can engage today and to what degree? Um, on having input and identifying need and, and identifying, um, what the best potential is for this project?
And I, and I think that's kind of what Tim was talking about, that in some districts, maybe more typical process is we, we do review the facilities and then, um, there's a facility committee that gets armed with, okay, wow, we, we didn't realize we needed all these different things to be completed. And at that time, you would go out and do a survey of the community and say, hey, what do you, what are you hearing are the biggest needs? What do you see is the biggest need of the district? Um, and so having a survey done of the community on what your needs are right now would, would be difficult in, in my opinion. The, the feedback that you will, you would want from a community is what are the challenges that you see at the site at the, at the pre-K K one-two? And I think that it would be hard to just ask, uh, community member, open-ended question, what do you see are challenges at the pre-K, you know, at John Klein? When they maybe aren't familiar with that site or they aren't, they aren't very educated on some of the things internally with the mechanical system, um, versus asking a public, you know, what's your experience at a fall game or what's your experience taking your kids to the different facilities that they're at? And so I think that the best way to ask, to, to get them involved would be to wait till there's kind of information out there, do kind of a presentation and it could even be, um, put in the paper. It could, at that time, we, we've talked about getting the Donovan Group involved, which is a, a marketing and communication group. And so we could at that time even develop a website or something that starts to communicate, hey, here's our, here's some of the challenges, here's our top priorities, here's the programming that we're trying to accomplish, here's links to articles on twenty-first century education and what we're trying to accomplish and why this fits into the mission of the school district. Um, give us some feedback on these five things or ten things and, uh, because it has to be some kind of information, hopefully, that can be usable um, and that, and not just kind of open-ended survey type of pieces.
That makes sense.
There, there's some point that the community would be very interested, for instance, transportation, not transportation, but parking in the, in the
The traffic around it.
Traffic, so, early on, they're kind of go, geez, you know, that's why we've got a problem. So we do, do know through work that you've done, that there are some things we can do to make that a lot better and might, a lot safer for the students, right?
Right.
So those might be questions that might be thrown, you know, out there, you know. Uh, is, is that being looked at? And of course, that's something that, that fairly early on, might be something that, uh, might be needed to be discussed. Another thing is when we talk to the city and, and purchase property, you know, we jointly talked about the green space and things. So that there's gonna be a lot of opportunity for quite a bit of green space and that can be used in different ways and we want to make sure that makes sense for the community outside of school as it does for inside the, you know, as, as during the school day. And those things are important to talk about too. And obviously, I know you, you'd have somebody, we would have somebody from, uh, the, the city council or whatever, surely on, on board to, you know, to help us through that process and make sure that the communication gets presented correctly as well.
Yeah, and I would say, um, having somebody on a, a facility committee from the city would be ideal. Uh, and any of those groups, but that could be a representative, a person or representative from, you know, the farmer's market or, or somebody in the downtown group or, to have them be on the facility committee so that they're, they bring up those pieces, hey, we, we really could have some more space or we, we struggle with traffic at this time of day, you know, so there's a joint solution as, as we start to look at the site and so we don't compound issues.
On, on this, when it says month one, which, which month are you considering month one?
Yeah, so I kind of left it general and, and, and it's on purpose, because I, I think what we should do next is have a conversation with, with Jerry Gallagher to talk about when to kind of really start all of this. Um, and how that works with the election day, because what legislation has done now is focused everything to one date. Um, and so there's a rhythm to this as far as meetings and, uh, getting the public involved and getting information out there. And you want to, you know, peak so most, the most people possible know what's going on right at the election time. And so it's possible, you know, it, it's one thing to bring the administration in and talk about the solutions and, you know, take your time and work through those things, but it's another to start a facility committee because usually they're only, they can only commit to three to five meetings or something along those lines. And those are the people that you want to go out and start to spread the information and gather information, bring it back to the committee, uh, influence the solution. The communication comes out, people are talking about it. Everybody knows as much as they can about the situation and then you vote. You don't want it to be like, everybody knows everything about it, now vote on it in three months from now. You know, like, like there needs to be You know, like, like there needs to be a rhythm to it to get it to the election. And so like the start date and the, the consistency of it needs to be thought out a little bit.
Do you typically, when you have done schools for, for other districts, do you typically have a fairly detailed plan? Um, schematic for people to look at and, um, before they, before the, the bond election?
I would say that is changing. I would say that when we did the high school, um, everything that we did was a very detailed plan, uh, three Ds. Cult, you know, like fully developed because people really wanted to know, you know, there was often comments about, um, you know, I want to know the color of the car I'm buying. I want to know what this money's all being spent on. Did you check every different possible way? Some, some ways that it's being done now is these are the needs we have. These are the three biggest needs we have and, and you all know this to be right. And so we're asking you to, um, help us move forward with a facility that will meet these three needs or these improvements to meet these needs. Um, you know, these all to be true. We have to make this happen. Instead of getting into the heavy detail of, you know, I wish you didn't put three teacher collab spaces in there because, you know, for whatever reason, I don't, I don't like the brick color you used on that. Why, why is the common small? Are you sure there's enough in there for two hundred students to eat? You know, like, you have to be a little careful about how much detail you start to put in there because they can turn around and, and bite you because people will vote on it just for reasons said are kind of absurd, um, even though it's going to adapt from that situation. So I, there is not a perfect answer to that question.
And overall, look at how the building might sit in that space, you know, and what it might look from, like from, uh, what above Water Street or something. I think that surely would be part of the, the, the plan. This is, this is a pretty good idea how it was going to fit in here, where it would be and, and what it might look like, not what it's going to look like. Does that, does that make sense?
I agree. I, uh, and, and that's one thing that we've already started to process. A lot of it, I think the, the biggest things when we originally reviewed the building was the safety of students and the safety of cars and, and drop off and pickup and how that's, you, you got all your high school students coming to the exact same spot that you're dropping off your youngest, most vulnerable kids. How is that a situation that's taken care of with, you know, separating bus and parent drop off and traffic and so I think you have to have that figured out. I think people, I don't, I, I think it'll be hard to object to, man, we're trying to make this safe. We're trying to really understand the traffic. Um, when you start to get down to personal choices like brick color, uh, you know, what, what a little bit educational spaces start to look like or, um, where my classroom is in the building. That, that type of stuff is, is where. But I think, I think you're, I think most people will want to know how the traffic works. How big this building is going to look, what it, what it's going to kind of feel like on the site, where the green spaces are. If they're, if the tennis courts are on the same side, where the playgrounds are and, and in general, you know, what are some of the aspects of the building? It's pre K through second grade, how many classrooms are there? You know, what's, what's all in there?
Other questions or comments for Nick?
Are there any state or federal law, uh, guidelines for primary schools for how many level? How many stories it can be? I mean, can it be a multi-story building?
There are guidelines, yes. Um, it has mostly to do with the age of the student and the floors that they can be on in progress. So pre K kindergarten and typically first need to be on the main level. Otherwise they have to have direct exits out of their classroom onto grade. So you would have, if you took some of those grades up, each one of those rooms would have to have a separate stairway to get down to the main level. And so, and it's, it's just good practice. It's good design, right? You're not going to put your littles upstairs and try to get them to come downstairs and all together in one location when there's a, an emergency or a fire or anything like that. So then, uh, second grade, uh, above can go, um, up above. Uh, there's, there's also other things that just start to kick in, you know, like if you go into a three-story building, there's code requirements that start to force you to separate levels, which starts to up cost and things like that. Uh, so two, two stories is typically like, um, kind of the sweet spot.
What else?
Well, I think Brian hit on my key point, which was thinking about where and how this lies in the existing space that the public can understand. All right, this is where the recycling used to be and this is now whatever the new part of the building or where it's going to sit and stand. Um, I think that will be very helpful for the public.
Okay. Well, we'll look forward to getting started and collaborating with you and, and the Gallagher group. And thank you so much for your time and making the trip up to be here in person.
You bet.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Nick.
Okay. Next on the agenda is approval of modified supplemental amount, MSA for the at-risk and dropout prevention program.
I'm going to recommend that we approve this. Uh, this comes with authority and matching state funds. So it's a very good thing. To do.
It's a lesson number one from, uh, my answer one oh one.
Absolutely.
Increase our spending authority.
It comes with authority. Uh, um, so, um, and I don't know how long you want me to talk on it, but, uh, uh, the state sets a, we got locked into a percentage and I think our percentage is five percent that we're allowed to levy for this. Um, I can tell you coming from other districts, uh, I think Central City was at three point five and Duckerton was at two point five. So we are maxed out on what we can, what we're allowed to levy for, uh, which is a good thing. And, uh, so that number is five hundred and seventy-five thousand nine hundred and eight dollars. Then the other really good thing is you want to spend this down to zero every year, which you can see online for, we were able to do last year. Uh, the advantage to spending that down to zero is you don't spend it down to zero, then the state withholds what they give you the next year. So it's, and, and so this is dropout and at risk. So there's lots of positions in a school that, that can, uh, positions that can be funded with dropout and act at risk, you know, certainly counselors and other things like that. And we use it, um, ours is pretty unique. We use it for little pieces at the middle school, but we might modify that around a little bit too. So.
Nick, I will move that we approve the application for modified supplemental amount.
Second. Okay. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Um, next is approval of early graduation requests. And there are more than a few.
Yeah.
So I'm going to turn it over to Brad. This is, this is request to graduate at the end of first semester this year.
Semester, correct. So each of these students has written a letter, uh, in the letter, he'll see their intentions for why they want to graduate early. Um, there's a variety of reasons communicated, but the essence of them is they either want to, uh, work, get ready to go to college, or they plan to enter college right away next semester. Um, so I think it's kind of just good to read some of those letters to kind of get a sense of the stories. Um, all of these students are on track to meet all the graduation requirements. I've run that through our registrar and counselor just to verify that. Um, last year I was remembering the wording of this, uh, the industry director Yella used, which was basically like approval contingent upon officially meeting the graduation requirements. So I can't tell you guys how to word things, but that's, I remember that from last year. That was a good way to word that. Um, but I would entertain any questions if there are any.
They are invited to come to the graduation ceremony.
They can split down the graduation commencement ceremony. They can participate in prom. They cannot participate in these sports. We talked about that with all of them. None of them had any intention to do so.
So graduation and prom are just the two activities that they're invited to attend.
That's certain senior bank with, senior bank.
Senior bank with.
Sorry, forgot.
Events related to graduation.
Right.
Right.
And I will interject and just appreciate that because we did have a situation in a different district where they graduated, but they still wanted to be on the dance and we were like, but they're not a student anymore. Like we wouldn't let them play on a basketball team or a wrestle. So, um, although, although that seems obvious and it was in our wording, it's always a good thing your minds do that.
And will they be, um, allowed to, uh, apply for foundation scholarships? Close the store continuing on? They won't be here in January to get the information rather than have to given set out to them.
Yeah, we still have a list of all the seniors that we use through constant contact.
I make a motion to approve the early graduation requests with the caveat that they, um, uh, do all the things that are required to graduate. Um, in the past, have we done these individually? Do we need to? You can approve them in mass?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's up to you.
Well, I will second the motion to approve all.
Okay. Need further discussion? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next is the approval of the Decorah Consent British Scholarship.
Yeah, the Norman C. Braddish Scholarship, um, um, very lucrative scholarship that's, uh, I guess completes to students, uh, who graduate from Decorah. And this was a request, it was presented to us as they were changing banks. Um, occurs when you have a lawyer that's on your board and that he has questions. There's a little bit more to this. Ron, you got it. And if we need to talk about the Braddish Scholarship, Ron's related to the first recipient, but that's maybe a story for later.
Yeah, for another time. Um, what's going on here is the, uh, Norman Braddish at the end of his life resided in Winter Park, Florida. So his estate was probated in the state of Florida. So it's under Florida court supervision, even though all the beneficiaries are here. So it's been Florida courts talking about Decorah High School and Decorah Hospital, now known as Wind Med.
Wind Med, yeah.
And, uh, also a hundred dollar a year donation to a ho- hospital in Winter Park, Florida. Uh, so the bank that started off with this in nineteen fifty-nine has changed. They recite, you know, changed names, um, more times than you can shake a stick at, but they have decided to get out of the business of running trusts. So they have found another bank, Regions Bank, which I don't know if they have any connections here. I think they are in Iowa somewhere. Um, so the other bank has agreed to take over and as part of the process, they are asking the court to change a scholarship, which is currently limited to males only, to be available for males or females. So it's not as if they're going to do two scholarships, it's just that females can apply. Um, technically we are not a party to this at all because it isn't given to the school. But we stand in as the representative for the students of the future who will be able to apply for the scholarship. So the application states that this is not necessary, but they ask us to bless it so that it is more likely the judges say, okay, great. So what we are being asked to do is approve a draft order, which would say bank A is out, bank B is in and by the way, the scholarship did not go to females. So I think it's pretty straightforward, well, not really straightforward, but I think it's uncontroversial.
The rest of the criteria stays in place.
Yeah. Yeah.
Any other questions about the scholarship with this approval?
I know Brad or Adam would clean that up. I did pull up, um, this, this to your point, the stipulations that we communicated last year, which were must attend out of state, out of school, school out of state, must attend a four-year school, must attend a non-religious denomination controlled or supported school. If the recipient marries before he graduates to college from Ron's point, the scholarship will be canceled. The recipient must maintain good academic record and at the school of choice. So and the criteria that were used to select people, high school academic record, intellectual ability, curiosity, personality and character and financial need. So I'm, I don't know exactly, but what I'm understanding here with those same criteria and stipulations may be in place.
Yes.
With the exception that males and females and really anybody can apply for those.
So that's the new criteria. Didn't stop talking about the, the sex, male, female, right? That's a new criteria that you're reading?
That's all of the criteria.
Right, yeah, that's, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And as mentioned, uh, my uncle's involvement in a story that he wrote, which I was fortunate enough to get a copy of. Uh, he was the first recipient in the class of nineteen fifty-three. And he wanted to go to Luther, but Brad said, no, you have to go to, uh, out of state school. He said, well, I'm going to Iowa. So if you don't like it, give it to somebody else. So he went to Iowa, got married after sophomore year. So all kinds of things that would not be allowed now, mostly in response to the things that he did. Well, I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, core consent for the Braddish scholarship.
I'll second one.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. All in further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Big probably year, the one that has to sign a little form.
Yeah. Okay. Um, next is review of the district process for, um, SF four ninety-six compliance, which for those of you unfamiliar with the legal numbering system, this has to do with um, reviewing the books that we offer in our library, our school libraries. So Tim has, um, or just, Tim and myself have both participated in this committee as well as Mr. Hurst and Ms. Corten and Liz Fox and Rebecca Newhouse. So do you want to tell us, Tim, a little bit about, um, the process that was developed with this committee?
Sure. Um, so Senate file four ninety-six has gotten a lot of, well, you've probably seen a lot of articles. That's the one that, uh, uh, we started seeing, you know, I guess that, uh, districts were um, creating a list of books that they were taking off their shelves, uh, as met with, uh, the standard that, that, uh, the state had, had put through on what wouldn't be on shelves and, and, um, there's different interpretations of different, uh, lawmakers have said different things, but, uh, one of the comments was you've got to get the porn off the shelves, the guy who sponsored the bill. So, um, that then required the state, as awkward as it sounds, to give us a definition of what do you mean by getting that off the shelves? Um, and, um, I'm not going to read it, but there's a link to its, um, descriptions or depictions of sex act, uh, of the sex act. So then, um, as a committee, um, we kind of had to review that. It felt like, uh, seventh grade health class a little bit, uh, where we had to kind of define, okay, what is this and what are we looking for? Um, from there, uh, the group met and we kind of said, okay, uh, there's a couple of things here. The, there was already kind of a list started. Um, uh, it's kind of a resource that we used at the mine register, put together a list of books that they were getting from school districts. Um, and so, uh, Shannon cross referenced that with what we had on our shelves and that maybe gave us a starting point on, on books that we were going to look at. Um, and at that point in time, uh, second or third meeting, we decided that we would, uh, take the books and read them and find the spots. Are we going to remove this or not? Because there are some books on that list that honestly, um, are books that maybe are removed in the, throughout the course of history, but didn't meet the, the definition of a sex act. Maybe they've been removed for other reasons. Uh, you know, like in the sixties or, or fifties or something like that. Um, so at that point in time, we said about reading and getting back together and sharing parts of the book. So I might take a pause and I know I didn't, that was, that was the warm-up, Shannon. So. Yes. So if you want to, as, as a teacher librarian and someone who's contact working with other, you know, groups on this, you, what did I miss to talk about the process or, 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 um, I mean, some of it. You, what did I miss to talk about the process or or or? Um I mean, some of it is. Why would our list be longer or shorter than other districts? And and some of that's going to be what we started with. And then the criteria we used and the fact that we're doing a criteria. Cause I think you and I both maybe have talked to districts who haven't done anything and we've got to have a something in place by January one.
I think that's what's difficult about this is that every district is interpreting us a little differently. They have to approach it. On their own, right? And so there's no guidance from the Department of Education. And so we are left to form a committee and and work through this on our own and make the best decisions we can. And that's, that's what we did. It is an ongoing process, so we do have a list of books that we provided to you. But we will continue to review books. As parents say, you missed one, or a kid says that, or a teacher says, can I teach this? We'll continue to read those books in their entirety and mark pages and come back to the committee. And so I think our process is is a good one. It's not, it's not um. What I want to be doing, but it's a good, it's a solid process. And so I I feel really good about the, you know, how we've set that up. So that's what I would add.
Mm-hmm. And the committee and process is also in place, so teachers that have classroom libraries can have the support of this committee. We are not. Depending on teachers to make those hard decisions on their own. They have the support of this process and committee to help them. Manage their libraries or books that they have in question. Um. Not, I'm not happy about this at all. And we've removed. Far more books than I ever expected that we would because I approached this committee with. The perspective of having as minimal to follow the law, but have as minimal of an impact on re- you know. Keeping books in our library and available to students. Um. And that. The process surprised me and we removed more books than I thought we should or would. Um so this is, this is difficult and. I don't like the law at all, but it's one that we have to follow from a risk management standpoint.
The thing I think is ironic with this is what I've gathered following along news coverage. This has probably made a lot of these books that no one has ever heard of very, very popular. Go back, selling lots of copies because of the attention that's been drawn.
But it's also some negative attention towards the authors and librarians, so they have that harassment issues. And now we have two, we have two uh lawsuits that are, you know, pending, so that they're challenging the law and that's out there.
How does the number of books that we have on our list compare to other districts that list you've seen for numbers?
They range, I mean, they range from, I don't know, twenty books to like forty-seven. Uh some districts, it looked like they just gathered everything that had never been challenged anywhere and they didn't have a process in place. It was like, this is, this is controversial somewhere at some time. It's on our list. Um and like Dr. Cohen said, some districts have decided to not do anything, but. They feel like the the lawsuits that are pending will take care of it and they're, they're not going to take the time to do it. So it's all over the place. It really is.
Uh the other piece is how many books, like if you're buying books. That's the other, like as the librarian, as you add to the collection, you might be a librarian who maybe likes to. Get a riskier collection or, you know, that's the other reason, like you don't remove a book if it's. There's nothing to be removed. So there's also a piece, not only is it, what process are they using? Are they using a process? It's what process did they use to buy these books for the last ten years?
Well, what community are they buying from?
So we we present that information and the list that there'll be a press release. This is information that is important to lots of people and uh. The Des Moines Register has done a um. Records request on all districts that are doing it. So now that uh. We're public with ours, we'll release it to the Des Moines Register. So uh and I guess maybe one last point, this covers uh school libraries. Uh does not necessarily cover classroom libraries, but we feel like there's a common thread of common sense that if there's a book that we wouldn't have in a school library, we're not going to. We want to make sure that teachers are aware that they should also not have that in their personal collections. Among other things to maybe protect those teachers. So that's a part of it that we talked about is communicating out to staff. And and as Cindy said. If there's a book that a teacher has that's like, why I wonder how this, you know, should I have this in my personal classroom collection? The committee will review those and we did review some already, so. So yeah, but thanks everybody for their time on this one. Uh no one, no one got on the committee to get rid of books. It was a bunch of people who like books, uh but took the work seriously and and followed the the law to that.
I appreciate all the extra time that people on the committee. Put into doing this and making it a thorough process and will continue to to. Above and beyond your normal day, I'm sure.
Okay, so this is a review item, so no other action is needed from the board. Um. Next is a review of a book donation um. With this new legislation in place, it is the task of the board to review book purchases and books donated to the school district.
And if we're bringing it to this point, just uh um. It's recommended by our librarians, so administration also recommends that we accept this donated book. Um finally seen. We have an author visit coming up uh in February, maybe.
Yeah, virtual.
Virtual.
The author's name is Kelly Yang. And these books will go to Carey Lee Elementary and some to Decorah Middle School for fourth through sixth grade students.
And I assume it's safe to say that these have undergone the review process.
Okay, this is a review item again. Any objections to accepting this book? I don't think we have to formally take about, is that correct, Darlene?
That we do.
We have in the past, so we should.
So this is, okay, so I'll wait for further discussion or emotion on this item.
I move that we accept the book donation.
The. The way that Jen has written, can we do that? Is reviewing it, does that mean you can authorize it?
Um, yes, I think we should.
Okay, okay.
I move that we accept the book donation finally seen to Decorah Schools, specifically Carey Lee and the middle school.
A second. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Um next is the approval of uni- universal pediatric agreement for nursing services.
Yeah, I mean, let Sarah explain that, sorry.
An expert in the.
Yeah, we have an expert.
So um there are a couple of students in our district that um whose parents um have opted to have some nursing services that. Um support their children and um uh help them outside of school. Um and uh the way that the contracts work is. Um you know, it's usually like a twelve-hour shift or something along those lines. And so then that. Um had a nurse come to the school as well during that time, so the parents can get the services outside of school. Um and so that agreement really is just um outlining uh the students' need for um this particular company. We've uh approved these before with a different company. Um and so this is a new company and um it's like, well, we're responsible for what they're responsible for.
Was there a reason to switch different companies or?
Just parents, but it's not, it's not up to us, you know, it's really about what the parents are are looking for, so.
I guess the. At risk of stating the obvious, this is um an obligation that is financially falls on the district.
Um, so um. I don't think so. He beyond what, is Tim am I wrong in that? Um, you know?
Yeah, uh.
Yeah, this is just something that agreeing that the the nursing, the nurse comes to the school and, you know. What are the differences between our school nurse and what their nurse is doing that? That nurse from this company is not going to come in and instruct other students. They're not going to, um, you know, where they're just providing nursing services for the student father in school.
The closest thing that it reminds me to is maybe like a student teaching agreement.
Yeah.
Where we would allow professionals to be in our building and the liability with that.
Yeah.
Um I will make a motion to approve the universal pediatric segregation.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Next is the first readings of board policies four oh one. Um point oh one, five oh three, point oh one, five oh three, point oh two, and five oh three, point oh three.
Uh these are all follow along of the same, same line of recommended uh. By ISAB to be compliant with the law. There's an equal opportunity, uh equal employment opportunity. And then there's uh some on the student suspension uh and guidelines, uh student conduct that the was established in the last legislative session. First reading tonight, um but I'm not going to have any changes because these came from ISAB and they're mandatory. And I I leave, when I, when I pop these in, like my little hint is, um I put them into the actual document, but lots of times I'll just leave. Uh like a bolded note from ISAB that says this is a mandatory policy, so that you know I'm not just making up more policies of my spare time.
And these are, so these are ISB and they're new to us.
And then we, we, we will do a first reading tonight and we'll do a second reading and then we'll, these will replace existing policies.
And at what point do our middle school and high school or our administrators look at these and say, this is. We're already following this, this and this, but maybe not that so much.
Uh.
Practice with what is actually.
Well, by next month when it becomes board policy, for sure. There's a quiz.
And once this is fully adopted. Somebody will go in there and and the people that revise that and they'll be online and available after.
Yeah, I worked with Sean. I put it in, copy paste, put it in, and Sean uploads it, yeah.
From what I can see, we're taking these directly from the ISB with the exception of four oh one one, which adds Decorah as the name school.
I just start, I went through and started editing. They're, they're all from ISAB, yeah. That's, that's a, that's a good point. When, when you put them into the the Google Doc that you upload, you want to go through and do that editing. Um and I'll just say, I know as somebody who reads other districts. Board policies occasionally you'll see it. It says there's a blank, it'll say, and then you just have to adapt to the editing.
Okay, so um Darlene, can you help me remember that we need to approve first reading? We do need to have the vote. Okay.
Yeah.
I move to approve the first reading of. Four oh one oh one, five oh three oh one, five oh three oh two, and five oh three oh three.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Um approve purchase of scoreboard with matching donation. Um Tim or Adam, would you like to tell us about?
Well, I'll just tell why we were taking this. Um so this is a purchase that exceeds the twenty-five thousand dollars, which is the reset limit by which. I can't spend more than twenty-five thousand dollars without board permission, which is. Very typical to have a a limit for uh superintendents uh to do that. Um. And we're getting this reimbursed and I'll let Adam talk about that, but even. There's maybe a thought, well, it's getting reimbursed, we have to take it to the board. And I guess I. Always take these things to the board because we're still purchasing it. So I'll. That's why we're, we're looking at this, but I'll let Mr. Riley talk about what it is and where it's coming from.
We are aware uh last fall, uh not this fall, but the previous fall portal that passed away and it was a foreign money that was donated. And in our work with uh the family and specifically Lon, uh that is a thing they wanted to. Um have um a fair amount of memorial money going forward to this school.
That other school, the other board's not that old. Is that, is that going to be? Or would you use that to someone else or?
I hope so.
Okay.
It is the intent of of doing several several different things that have kind of got the works, but I think that they. So get more people to talk.
Yeah.
Um knowing that this is a very generous memorial gift to the Decorah School District, I'm wondering, do we have a school district policy on memorial gifts? Uh giving policy? For example, like if someone had made a memorial gift and their intention would, didn't make sense or. Was against other school protocol. I'm just wondering if we have a gift policy in place.
I'm sure we have a gift, I know we have a gift policy in place. I don't have it memorized, so I can share that out with the board. Um. Uh usually I was thinking you were going to go down the line of like naming rights. If I donate so much money, do I have a naming right? Usually that's a. Uh boards want to go that. You got to be careful with that because there's always good intentions behind that, but. You just have to be careful in what you name it, but um I could certainly get us our. Our policy later tonight or first thing in the morning.
Um so that, you know, with. I think it's possible to make a motion to approve something contingent on something. That's blatant in the giving policy, which will be shared in the future.
Or make a recommendation that it, that it meets our policy we have.
Right. Right.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't foresee a lot of controversy about a scoreboard. Kind of objective, it just tells you what the score is.
And and just also, there's nothing in addition as far as wanting to deal bears the name already, so.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Been happy to note that it will, new one will not be read.
Does this compare to the current scoreboard is my only question? Does it differ vastly?
It's almost, it's the same size, it's the same, same structure, um different LED technology on the board.
Well, I make a motion that we uh. Except, except the scoreboard request for matching donations and we have authority for that uh. Purchase and based on the review of our policy to oversee this and that meets that criteria.
I second contingent upon it meeting that criteria as well.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Um next is the superintendent's report.
Um. I don't know if I have much to add to that. I kind of put in there a little bit of information about the. The targeted funds, uh you kind of compare with the ESAs. Uh we, because that was one of the things that was said when they passed the ESA legislation was. In school districts, we get twelve hundred dollars while they met in the, in receiving other targeted funds. Um I did put our board meeting dates and times in there. So if you'd like to have those, so I have the next two meetings being six thirty. Um but March eleventh, we would go back to five thirty, okay? And then we would start the six thirty again. Uh looks like October fourteenth.
That'd be much appreciated.
Okay, um so I think we're on the same page and then we'll just be flexible with other things and um. Making sure people get to. Events of their children as much as possible. Um but on that, it was kind of a short list this one.
With the tennis courts, we're just still looking at them. Was there any measure, I mean, is there any possibility that they will stay?
There's a good possibility they'll stay down. In, in that, in the, in the, in the island.
Hmm.
Um so um as we get farther with Nick, he can fit him down there and it's just a matter of uh will it work for us? And but there's a good possibility we'll just keep him down there.
Mm-hmm.
So.
And this mention of a future meeting? Is that referring to later this week or did that meeting happen last Friday?
Oh, uh that was, we met with that, actually that happened today.
Oh, okay.
I typed it, it was on a Friday and then I moved it to Monday so Nick could stay. We met with, Nick Matt came over and met with the administration. At one thirty today and then just stayed. And so he was kind of, we had kind of told him, you know, class, how many classrooms he needed and. Or how many classrooms we needed. We kind of talked. He was kind of helping us vet through some traffic, but also where the tennis courts might be. So, so as we move forward, you know, we don't want to give out a hundred ideas. We want to try to have them muddled down like we said before, so, yeah. So as we move forward, you know, we don't want to give out a hundred ideas. We want to try to have them muddled down like we said before. So, yeah.
Okay. And finally, last but not least, our financial report.
For the cash flow as of today, right now our revenues are up about four hundred eighty-five thousand dollars, but our expenses are also up about six hundred twenty-three thousand. Uh, some of that is due to salaries, uh, a lot of it is to capital outlay. Um, most of it is because of our turf, turf project was coming and being paid with ESSER fund. So you can see that. If you take a look at our fund balances, uh, the PEPAL and the SAVE are a little lower this year or or compared to last year, and that's because of our two big purchases. Um, and then the normal ones are, you know, general fund is down a little bit, but food and nutrition is up, um, activity fund is up. So I mean, we're going for it at a very good pace.
Two major purchases where the bus barn and
And can you remind us when, so the turf project was funded through?
ESSER fund.
ESSER fund. And those reimbursements will come later, this year or next year?
I made the request um before November thirtieth, which was the deadline, and hopefully maybe December or even in January. So we'll be getting it sorted.
Okay.
Do we have any ESSER funds left?
Yes, we do. I don't know how much, but we.
She knew that was coming next. Any other questions for Kathy?
Well, we will spend the ESSER funds by
By.
June of twenty-four or in November by September.
Okay.
We've been able to do some nice things with those.
Okay. Without any further business, we will adjourn.